Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. We're going to go ahead and get the meeting started so we can get out of here. Then just stand with the flag, please, please.
...... through the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Father, here's a prayer. My gracious heavenly Father, Lord, again we gather together seeking your guidance, your knowledge, your direction, Lord. We ask that you will be with this meeting tonight. We ask that you'll be with the individuals that couldn't be here tonight, Lord. Regardless of the reason, we ask that you'll be with them. We ask that you give this council the wisdom and courage to make the decisions that are in the best interest of your name and this community. May the call is in your favor. Amen.
Please be seated. The first on the agenda is our special presentation request. So Ida Mesa, special appreciation, but we're going to postpone that until December. But we would like to do a special recognition, and if you see around, we have some Boy Scouts in the room that are working on their communications merit badge. They're going to be taking notes. If you want to ask them questions or whatever, feel free to answer the questions or get the reason why they're here, so they can earn their badges. So let's give them a hand for showing up. Next is the Harper's Home update. This is April Moorefield and Matta Kedde.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm sorry for a few moments late.
All right.
I've come today to talk to you about a program that is new to Tasswell County and that you will support. But first, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the background of how the program evolved. So my name is April Moorefield. I'm the executive director of the Care Center in southwest Virginia. The care center is located in Richlands. It is a child advocacy center. We serve Tasswell, Russell, and Buchanan Counties. We opened in 2019, and since we've opened, we've seen over 400 children to date. We see children who have been victims, alleged victims of physical abuse, sexual abuse, witness to drugs, domestic violence. The old way of doing things was when a child, there was alleged child abuse mentioned in the schools, typically the principal would call CPS, and the child would have to come down to the principal's office and be questioned. Law enforcement would come in, maybe CPS would come in. That's kind of the old way of doing things. That traumatizes a child. So the goal of the care center is for children to have a safe, child-friendly, neutral location to come in and share their story of victimization. That way, they're not having to go into DSS agency and talk about what has happened to them, which is perhaps the worst story that they may never have to tell in their life. So the care center is very child-friendly. We have Capri Suns. We have chocolate milk. We have 50s, and we have lots of things for children. We are very loving towards children. We have cartoons on all the time. What we do is we have them come in with their non-offending caregiver, and we take them back to a room with a trained forensic interviewer. This forensic interviewer is trained, very trained and skilled, in talking to children about their story of victimization. He actually will try to gather all the details with the childhood report, and he'll talk about their home life and their school life, and then he'll kind of get into the details of what happened and hope that child will open up and share that story. The reason why we do that is so that there's not multiple statements from the child sharing their story at school and other places, which makes prosecution efforts very difficult because children tell different things to different people at different times. So that is the one statement that the child shares. We do burn that interview on DVD. We record it. We give that to prosecution. We give it to law enforcement. And the interview is watched in another room by CPS and law enforcement. And they actually can speak to the forensic interviewer by headset and ask certain questions because sometimes prosecuting child abuse cases can be very difficult because in Virginia, a child has to take the witness stand if it goes to court if there's no plea. So it's very hard for a child to talk about the details to a defense attorney or even to be cross-examined. It's a very painful process, and it's traumatizing, and they have to do that in front of the perpetrator. So our goal is to collect all those details in this forensic interview to help prosecute and to help the child. We aim to make a very adult-like process, very child-friendly. In 2020, the care center noticed a need. The children across Virginia were receiving appropriate medical care for following assault, but the children in southwest Virginia were not. I traveled all the way up to all the other child advocacy centers across Virginia, and I found that these children who were being assaulted were getting specialized medical care by a SANE nurse, and that's Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner. Currently, today, there's no one in this area that can do that service. I found a nurse in Roanoke, and I pretty much begged her to come down two days a week. So she comes down. She's certified in SANE in pediatric and adults. So she sees about five to eight children per week in our area of all three counties combined. So that medical evidence that we're collecting in those examinations goes a long way in validating what the children say happened to them. It goes in court. It can be used to prosecute because, again, child abuse is very hard to prosecute. And recently, I was approached, probably maybe last early spring, by one of our partners in Buchanan County, and it's Buchanan County Department of Social Services. They're housing a child. They were housing a child who was in a wheelchair, and he has cerebral palsy. He was living in Lynchburg, and his foster care family gave him up because he was becoming aggressive because of his age. And so they were housing him in the DSS agency. They were not able to get him placement in a state hospital anywhere in Virginia. So they called me and Will, and they said, can you help us? Can you help us find a place for this child to stay? So, of course, Will and I reached out to the governor's office, and we found that there were 30-some other children living across the state in DSS agencies or in emergency rooms or in hotels, motels across the state of Virginia. I can tell you today that this system is very broken for children, and it is in our area as well. I have found that in Russell County and in Tasswell, children are having to stay in DSS agencies and other places until they transition into the foster care system. DSS has three 24-hour periods, to my understanding, to find a placement for a child. During that time, they will wait in either cubicle or an office for placement. And if you've ever met a child that has been taken out of their home at no fault of their own from drugs, domestic violence, or has been abused in some way, it's very traumatic on that child, but it's heartbreaking to see that. They are hurting. It is perhaps the worst time of their life, and they're very fragile, and they need special care. They need special attention. They need to be left on. They need, most of the time, their physical needs need to be met. They need a bath sometimes. Sometimes they need life treatment. Sometimes they need clothes. They need to be fed. Sometimes they're hungry. Sometimes they need a dental appointment. They're bound for us. Pretty much anything that you can think of sometimes comes along with neglect. That's what we're working with. And so I thought about why can't we do better as a community? Why can't we create a place where children can go to when they are removed so they can be just left on, taken care of during that time of transition? And that's how Harper's Home evolved, and that's the time I'm about here today. I'm hoping that you will support this project. Harper's Home will be, again, a temporary oasis, if you will, in the midst of a storm for a child, for them to come and rest. If they're removed in the middle of the night, they can go back to sleep. There's going to be beds. There's going to be food. There's going to be toys. There's going to be a swing set, a nice swing set, a number of things that children can have to be left on during that difficult time to take some of that trauma off them and reduce that level of re-traumatization that they go through when they're transitioning to a brand-new home. And brand-new bed, and just everything is new when they move into foster care. It's very traumatic on a child. Sometimes we see a lot of sit-down sets, and my plan is for the home to have a crib bed and toddler bed, all with twin beds in certain rooms, so that children can feel comfortable staying there until they find an appropriate family. You may want to know how the name Harper's Home evolved. After we opened, I met a family from Dickinson County who had suffered loss of their grandchild due to physical abuse. The case is still open. It's in Salem, Virginia. Her name is Harper Mitchell. She died at two years old from her mom's porpoise. The grandparents, Shirley and Ron, posted and created Love Harper Comfort Bags, and those little bags have been given up, I think it's in 22 states. The little bags have just goodies and things that law enforcement officials and so forth can give out when they go out on a domestic violence call and the child needs to be distracted when they're maybe arresting one of the parents or something like that. So they brought the care center a bunch of those bags, and I heard the story of little Harper Mitchell, and it broke my heart. I've been told that Harper was a very sweet, kind, loving person who wanted to share. So what better way to honor Harper than to call this project Harper's Home? So I'm here today to ask for support on that project, and I thank you for giving me time to speak at your meeting. Do you have any questions, Renee?
I would say thank you. Yes. Good evening.
So I don't think we have a review amendment to existing ordinance. Chapter 23, Section 23-1, definitions in Section 26, 23 through 26, use and set public hearing. Matta Kedde?
Yeah, that's a hard act to follow behind. I had the privilege Monday night to catch a few gaps, like one or two. You know, for those of you that know me, to have to be at a loss of words is...
It doesn't have a loss of...
That's right. You know, there's ordinances in the state code, specifically 15.2, Dex 2291, that recognizes adult centers. We're actually blessed to have a few of those in this community. But the individuals that also need attention are our youth or our childhoods. And I know that one of these elected officials on the board, I won't mention names, mentioned that long ago, about the lack of, I think the term was used, mental health assistance. And this falls right into it, but for whatever reason, our code book does not recognize a facility like this. For the last month and a half, maybe two months, my staff and myself have been working to try to find a way to make it a reality, and I just hate to say that our code book doesn't recognize it nor the state code. To make a long story short, I'm going to turn it over to Chris and let him explain the details of it, but we've got an opportunity tonight to make history and just add a use to the R2 zone. The R2 was created for this type of facility. The R2 zone was strategically selected, and we've got an opportunity tonight to add a use to that zone. In 20, 25-plus years that I've been in local government management, I've never supported spot zones. And there's reasons for it, and I know Brad's over here saying, don't ever bring that up again, but I can tell you that in the next month or so, that there's going to be an added request that's going to come before this board, and I'm absolutely going to support it. So I got a little foresight and less to be working with a team of people to try to make this a reality, and I'm only carrying a small part of it. I would ask canceled consideration tonight after the explanation is given for a unanimous vote to support, not just rejoicing, but a unanimous to push this through. With that being said, that Chris, you can explain the changes in the R2.
Section C, first page in that section, we'll be changing the definitions and adding the children's residential facility. That's about the whole page. It defines all three sections of that. We did not have that children's facility in our code book anywhere as a definition. That'll be the first change. And then the second change will be just adding, maybe the third page back, in Section 23-26 in R2 use, to strike out the rest home and insert the children's residential facility, foster home, and group home. It's the only thing that will be added to the R2 district. What we'll do is we recommend this to be sent to the public hearing for December. Send out 700-plus letters to everybody in R2, and it'll be a generic letter from Brad. People's names won't have to be put on. It'll go to be addressed, and we'll explain to the change in the R2 district. Of course, by the public hearing in December, and then you can vote on it then.
May I make the motion to approve?
Okay.
Any discussion?
I'd like to amend, Chris, if I could respectfully ask you to amend that motion to be specific to ordinance and definition. You got two different. You got an ordinance, and you got a definition. There are two of those.
Yeah, there are two of them, the ordinance for the definitions and then the ordinance adding the zoning.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the amendments to the existing ordinance?
For definitions.
You want to split it in two?
That's what I'm feeling. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor of approval, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying nay? All right, so motion carries. So next will be the set in the public hearing? For which one?
Use.
Oh, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the use?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor of states of by saying aye? All opposed, states of by saying nay? All right, the motion carries. Set 13 December, right? Would that be the follow-up? So I need a motion to set the public hearing for 13 December. It's a move at 7:00?
Just make it 7:00. If you change, we'll put it in paper.
Okay. At 7:00 PM?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of setting the public hearing for 7:00 on 13 December, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying nay? All right, so the public hearing will be set.
So next is our new business recognition. We have a couple gentlemen here representing Shepherd's Deli. If they could come up, introduce themselves, and tell us what you've got going on. I know, but you need to tell everybody else. I've become a staple there.
Guys, my name is Guy Haye, and Joe is I, Paul. We are the owners of Shepherd's Deli. We're just a couple best friends and brothers in Christ that took a step out on faith in trying to bring you guys the best that we can get, as fresh as we can get, and bring you some flavors that are familiar to this town, familiar to this area, things that we learned from our families, passed down, and maybe even bring some customer service that your mom used to get you need. Thank y'all for having us, guys.
Yeah, this is our first town council. Thank you for having us. Oh, he's coming down to 1661. Running through Friday and 105.
I've had the very great opportunity to know Zach for a long time. He and I have been hunting buddies.
Yeah, we sure have, boy. Thank you for having us, sir.
I became kind of a fixture at the restaurant, usually two, three times a week for lunch.
You got your own sandwich special.
I've got my own sandwich too. Yes, and every other visit, I'll get the banana pudding.
They got it good every morning.
We won't tell about the move to the pool.
Yeah. I eat a lot there. But guys, thank you for taking a chance in the town of Tasswell. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I appreciate it. You guys, you want to turn this way, Joe?
Oh, good.
You should probably move it like this way.
Oh, good, that's smart. Really.
You know about the laws of snacking, huh?
It is breakfast. Thank you so much. I didn't see what I was going to say. Oh, we go. All right. Thanks. Great day, sir. Thank you, guys.
Now, thank you for taking a chance here. We appreciate it. The next on the agenda is the approval of the management council meeting on October 11th, 2022. Can I get a motion to pass?
So moved.
I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, states of by saying aye? All opposed, states of by saying nay? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is the approval of the financial statements and the financial report from October 2022. I get a motion to approve. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval, states of by saying aye? All opposed, states of by saying nay? The financial statements and financial report are approved. The next committee and conference update, Finance Commission Committee, Councilman Kedde.
We were very privileged on Monday to hear the entire story of Harper's House, and unanimously raised the ordinance up for approval to set in the public hearing for next meeting.
All right. Excellent. So next, we're going to move right along to our unfinished business sections, and Mr. Kedde is going to give the sports complex update.
Okay, just want to give everybody just a little bit of an update on where we're at with that project, needless to say. We've got a lot of time and energy into that project, and I could go back and re-comment six years worth of information, a month and a tenth to do it, but I've been working on the RISE grant for the last couple of months, and the RISE grant is obviously a federal grant, and it absolutely involves multiple states, so it's not just a single-state grant. You have to actually partner with another state. So in attempt to do that, I've been in contact with some old friends, and both of them actually are on the Mercer County Board. Gene Buckner, Bill Marcher, both I've known for years, and I've also been in touch with the city, also their economic developer, John O'Neill. We've been working together for the last month. It seems like we're on the phone every day, trying to find a way to capitalize on that project. I've got another meeting on December 1st set up. We've had Virginia ARC representatives on the phone, Western D ARC representatives, and so far, it looks pretty promising. That's got a maximum of $10 million. So it has to value of the sports complex. So it's still an uphill battle, and it is absolutely the biggest battle for the best interest of any entity I've ever represented to see it to a completion. If everybody knew what I knew and what this board feared, they would better understand that. So I'm really excited about it, just kind of wanting to bring you up. I think that's going to put a reverse to a recent email. The ARC programs that we had, that we were originally looking at, they actually don't be fruition. I'll know more after we sign them first, but I'll keep you informed.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So next, the bridge update, the one that Hubble Hill and the Hardest intersection. Matta Kedde?
All right, so a number of years ago, after applying to VDOT, this has been, I'd say a number of years, it's been seven or eight years ago, but we received grants on a multitude of bridges in town. Our bridges are inspected twice a year. They have to follow VDOT criteria of inspection, so it's not something we do in-house. We actually have to hire that out. But we applied for a number of bridges in town, the one at Hardee's that was done a few years back. We've had one over at the Farm Bureau in North Thousand. They were all free. They don't have any tax dollars in them at all. We got just a little bit south of $10 million of the grants on bridges that were severely dilapidated, and then the report showed failure on all of them. So all of them scored literally an F rating. But two more bridges that we're going to be looking at in December is the other one right there, Four Way. And just to let you know, if you're leaving, I call it the fishing creek that belongs to the moose. If you're leaving there, coming back into town, there will be a restricted right-hand turn, so if you want to go across the railroad track, it'll be restricted right there. So you'll have to turn short there at the, not the Caddy, but Pop Shop and maneuver, but traffic will get used to it. The other one is that Hubble Hill, the big bridge right there at Hubble Hill. Both of them will be a total replacement. There'll also be a restricted right-hand turn coming off of Hubble Hill back into town. So it's like you're right there at town, but it's going to be a restricted right-hand turn. And I'm sure there'll be ways to manipulate that, that traffic will figure out, always is on every project, but it's going to let you know they're going to add in December. They are not self-administered. Those projects are administered by VDOT. We've got a lot of time and a lot of energy in them, but they are multi-million dollar projects that come in no cost to the local taxpayer anyway. The federal, your federal taxes make a tribute to it, but not out of your budget. That's all we've got there.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, I didn't see any miscellaneous unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. Leanne Reagan is going to discuss some budget movements.
So as you all know, from time to time, we have to shift some of the funds in the budget around, and I have prepared some budget amendments. Most of them is just moving funds from one item to another. We have received a little bit of funds that we didn't account for, and I have put that in the revenue and expense side to balance that out. If you all have any questions, I'll go over anything if you need to.
So nothing we need to vote on or approve?
Yeah, if you do have to approve every one of them, we don't have to take that and all of them and go over them if you've got them unless you have questions.
As soon as we have, you need to tell us exactly what happened on every one of them.
Okay.
I'm just kidding. I will make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second to approve the budget amendments?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of budget amendments, states of by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by saying nay?
Mayor, can I add one thing? I apologize for your discussion. These budget amendments are not a stranger to the town of Tasswell. They're all across the Commonwealth, and as the economy continues to fall, inflation continues to rise, and the lack of business and new development is non-existent, you're going to continue to see these budget amendments take place. It's hard to target the cost of vehicles. It's hard to target the cost of inflation as it moves off across the border. So we will continue to have these budget amendments throughout the remainder of So we will continue to have these budget amendments throughout the remainder of the year. Hopefully, in the next couple of years, it'll level out.
Fair enough. So, uh, we've got a second, so if there's no other discussion, all in favor of approval, states so by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, states so by saying nay? All right, Leanne, we're gonna approve your budget amendments.
Thank you.
So next, Mayor Day is gonna give us a paving discussion.
Okay, V-DOT, we also had a primary extension award from V-DOT. The last one we did was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But it was to pave from, from the Y through the intersection. I think we talked about it at the last meeting, the same, across the same bridge, it's getting ready to be replaced. V-DOT communicates really well. Anyway, it was supposed to happen like now, but I got a phone call a couple of weeks ago that it's gonna be pushed back to the spring or early summer.
And when does the bridge start?
It'll be be at December, so it'll, it'll be a
Early spring project, too. So maybe we won't pave it twice? Hopefully, it's closer to summer so we don't affect school traffic so much. Parents just love that.
It'll be a one-year project, both of them, by the way.
I retract that statement. Okay, next, the employee Christmas dinner. Manager Dan?
Okay, each year, we have an employee Christmas dinner. Just wanted to let you know when it's scheduled to be, which is the sixteenth, December sixteenth, the sixth Thursday, playing by VIP.
Any questions?
Will you be sending invitations to Councilman Alexa Lefan? Just like?
Yes, sir. Okay, so, uh, under new business, I didn't see anything miscellaneous. So jump to the miscellaneous public comments. Is anyone on the list?
No.
No?
No, it looked good coming in today.
Yeah. Start getting a little worried there. So, uh, next, any council member comments?
Yes, man, if I could. First of all, I'd like to publicly congratulate Emily, Emily, on your reelection. Great for you. Congrats to the two gentlemen that'll be joining. Wish you both the best, and I'm sure you'll need our counsel to the best of your abilities. What I want to talk about is the sports complex here. If you just give me a few minutes of your time, please. I was talking to Councilman Beasley, I've talked to Councilman Catron and Councilman Mullins. I think that there's some miscommunication, or as Todd likes to say, we are the worst at communicating, and maybe our legs will do a better job. But I want to give a little more information about why I believe, I'm laying duck now so I can stay real long. Actually, it hasn't stopped me for last minute. And I know most of you know that this project is near and dear to my heart. When I actually was appointed to this council eleven years ago, and I was interviewed in that back room after we lost Dr. G, or Dr. G, I was just, passed away, Dr. G, yeah. They asked me why I wanted to do it. And I said, because, and again, this goes back to when the main street didn't even have the soda machine on it. And the sidewalk was covered in pigeon poop in front of Red's office or right next to it. It looked like it broke into downtown, and it was broken downtown. I have a family here, I have a home here, I have a business here, I have commercial property here. And I was raised in that generation where your house, for most people, was your number one asset. That was the thing that, that a lot of people counted on through retirement. And although our property taxes were going up, the value of homes was going down. And I loved Tassau. I'm not from Tassau, but I loved Tassau. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-eight. And I wanted to see if I could do something. And so that's how I wound up here. And Todd, it's actually been seven years that we were talking about the sports complex. I actually met, where did I meet Mayor Hoops?
Flack.
Met him at a travel soccer game in Asheville, North Carolina. That's the first time we met. Blessed enough to see my kids play travel soccer and travel basketball. And we were at travel basketball in Marion. And I was like, we can do this. And the statistics are, I think if it wasn't a sports complex and it was some type of an industry, there wouldn't be so much confusion. Because I think too much of our community thinks that it's something for recreation and not something for commerce. There was two independent studies that were done. And I actually have statistics from the Sherman study, which was by far the most conservative. And I'd like to go through a few of those publicly if I could. So this industry in the United States right now is forty-five billion dollars a year. The economic impact on the town of Tassau would be, in the first year, would be attracting three hundred and seventy-five thousand people to our community. Assume that seventy percent, seventy percent of these individuals would require an overnight stay in the region for duration of the athletic tournament. The facility itself would hire approximately eight full-time and seventy-five part-time employees. The Sherman study did show that the sports complex would average four point one million spending and would support sixty jobs per year in the town of Tassau from twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-three. The annual average impact in the county is estimated to be five point two million with sixty-seven additional jobs per year. It's estimated the visitor spending would generate seven hundred thousand in economic impact, direct and indirect. And the annual economic impact in the county would be five point five million. Post-construction, Tassau, the, if we were to go with the company that we're working with now, E S M, Eastern Sports Management, is estimated to generate an annual average of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in tax revenue for the town of Tassau, two hundred and twenty-six thousand for Tassau County each year from twenty twenty-four to twenty forty-three, unless you guys raise taxes, which probably won't. Sherman calculated a twelve percent of total visitor spending would occur in Tassau County and one point nine percent of it in the town, resulting to the town directly, four, four million per year in the county and six hundred and thirty-three thousand in the town. This is definitely an economic impact. The resulting real estate tax revenue is estimated to average fifty-nine thousand for the town and a hundred and nineteen thousand in additional real estate tax income for the county. Annual personal property tax revenue is estimated to average thirteen thousand for the town and forty-five thousand for the county. It goes on and on, but I want, I think, one of the biggest ones is that a hundred and sixty thousand in annual tax revenue for the town of Tassau and a hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the county. And when we met with E S M last time, those numbers, if I'm correct, would cover any note that we may have and the bill would be paid on, right?
Putting meals back, back, yep, yep.
So, then, this is definitely something that can change this time. And I don't know of another thing that, that can bring four hundred thousand people to our community. And the, and the opportunity that those four hundred thousand people, I mean, how many who, we've all met people who've been here for the back of the dragon, come through our town and decide they want to buy a home here, right? When we bring another four hundred thousand people in here, guess what might just happen? And then our property taxes go up. And this is my eleventh year, if I'm correct. And I know, and Dr., or Manager Dan, tell me if I'm wrong, has our budget gone up every single year? The cost of doing business for this town, has it gone up every year or has it gone up every year?
Gone up every year.
And it's not getting cheaper? And our revenue, our tax revenue is going up or down? It's going down. And our population is going down at what percent every year?
One percent.
One percent. One percent every year. So, you know, this isn't a sky is falling segment at all. It's that, I was actually at a conference, I was at a conference this last weekend, and the gentleman that was presenting at the conference opened it with an excerpt from Exodus. And it was Exodus four. And it's when, it's when God told Moses to go to Pharaoh and tell Pharaoh to let his people go. And I guarantee a lot of you here in this room, if not all of you, know exactly what Moses said to God. What he said was, what if they don't believe me? Think about that. He didn't say, what if they, what if you're not really God? He said, what if they don't believe me? Which means Moses was afraid about, he was afraid of what the Israelites would think of him. And I'm gonna tell you that what ifs are the killer of all things possible. And if you look in our town, instead of thinking about the what ifs, you look at the what is, and I think what the what is, is the abundance that we already have. We have an awesome town council now with great leadership. We have two incredible new councilmen coming into this, to this town. We have a great management staff. We have a, E S M is a multi-million dollar sports management company that has twelve other facilities, I believe. And they picked us. They picked us because they did their own study after they looked at Sherman study, and they know that they can make it work. They're not a nonprofit. They're a for-profit. They're not coming here out of the goodness of their heart. They're coming here because they know they can make it work. I asked Joe Beasley a question earlier today, because I've been hearing the rumors of it. I said, Joe, you know, best, what's, what's the, what do they say, buck one, that scene? How much coal, how many years of coal then?
We have predictions for thirty years.
Thirty years? So what's Tassau look like in thirty-one? I've been out here for eleven years, and we've done some pretty neat stuff, but we gotta get moving. We're gonna be ready and have a totally new economy in thirty years. So my prayer, my hope is that, that, that our existing council that sits here today, that it remains on council, the leadership through our mayor Hoops, and that our new councilman will do diligence. Because you're going, here's what I, here's what I don't want it to be. I don't want our town council to be a maintenance committee that sits up here and just decides what they're gonna patch and fix every month as this town slowly dies. We've come a long ways, and there's a lot of greatness left in this town, and I think there's some great opportunities. And I think, serious, serious, I, I know we need roads, I know we need infrastructure, and we've worked on it, we've done a great job. But I'm gonna tell you all citizens, and not one of them right now, is that we had a hike in, in Water and Sewer, right? To pay for a ten million dollar project. Is it still ten million?
Last time I checked, it was eighty.
So if we don't bring any tax revenue, what happens to, to that?
Keep raising rates.
We either reduce services or we increase tax revenue. It's simple. I don't, nobody here wants to raise taxes. And if we don't raise taxes, what's the only other option we have?
Layoff, cut back.
Cut back. And what are a lot of, what are, what are a lot of towns like us doing across the Commonwealth? They're letting their police departments go, they're letting their EMS go. We certainly do not want to do that. Then we have citizens paying taxes, and what do we actually provide them? What services are we providing them? I think this is a great opportunity for us, and I, I just don't want small groups of people that don't know the information, that haven't done the studies, that see this, and there's a whole other side to this project where there's great opportunities for our community to recreate in there. And I'm not taking away from that. But they're not coming here to take away business from our Y M C A, or, or they think they're going to make a dollar on people in Tassau. They're coming here with a business plan, much like the back of the dragon, where most of their money comes from outside tax dollars. And I'm gonna tell you right now, you know what the best tax dollar for this town to collect is? Tax dollars are coming from people that don't live in our town. Because then we don't have to pay the tax. It's a beautiful thing. So I just hope everyone will take it seriously that this is a huge opportunity. If ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, you want to see liquidity in your home and the money you put in your home, if ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years from now, you want to see an opportunity where our kids and grandkids, grandkids can come back here and add an opportunity, don't rush past this. Because I, for one, don't know of another opportunity like this that's coming down the pipe whatsoever. So it hasn't been done with any, a lot of heart, a lot of work, and a lot of serious thoughts gone into this. So just do diligence and realizing the opportunity that sits right in front of us. They literally want us. Thank you.
Yep, I also would like to make some comments. I guess we're taking this opportunity since we have served for over decades. I've been on this council for twelve and a half years. So I hope you'll bear with me just a moment. I feel like I need to share just a couple of comments as well. And I would first like to congratulate Jonathan and Emily and Zach for their election to the council. And I look forward to hearing great things from the council as it moves forward. After Todd's comments tonight and Dr. Brown's comments that we just heard, I have some notes that I made a long time ago that I feel is now the time that I need to share. I've lived my whole life in this town. I taught government out of the high school here in Tassau for twenty-five years. And included in those students that I was privileged to teach are members of the town council to my left. And future members of the town council thanks to yesterday's election. Thirteen years ago, I was diagnosed with cancer. And as you know, anyone who's faced that, it's frightening. But thank God for thirteen years after cancer surgery that I had in November of this month, two thousand and nine, I'm cancer-free. Teaching government all those years, I always thought it'd be fun to be a part of it or to try it. And when I survived cancer, I realized that God could have given me an opportunity to do that. And I should perhaps throw Manhattan at proverbial range. So I did, and the people of this town have been good enough to give me three elections, victories, to be able to come back and to continue to serve on this council, for which I'm very thankful. We are blessed in this town to have a town manager and a council who are willing to think outside the box. And that's not always easy. And these people have taken great strides to do just that. And we have moved forward with this sports complex over the past several years. This council has placed the sports complex at the top of the agenda for projects that the council members want in our town council to pursue. The reason he has pursued this is because of us. We have ranked it number one. The sports complex was approved by this town council. It was approved by our town's I D E A. It has been approved by our town manager, and he has taken it forward as we have requested. It has been approved by our legal council. It has been approved by other entities within this town. It has been approved by entities beyond this town. Our school board was approached by members of this council and asked to support the project. Our board of supervisors member has been approached and asked to support their project. Other members of elected positions throughout our area, including our state representatives, have been approached and asked to support this project. W V D A T D visited our town council meeting and reported on the project and made it public in the local media last fall. We know from John Wax and Jim Thompson's presentations that the taxes of this town will benefit from this complex, will, as Dr. Brown has pointed out, more than make up the payments that the complex could perhaps incur on the town. I have always heard, and I believe Todd has said this upon occasion, that you strike when the iron is hot. I do not want to see I do not want to see future councils or citizens look back on 2022 as what would have been or could have been or should have been. I also believe this sports complex is an opportunity for us to provide a better future for our town that no one has been able to do in the past. The future would bring people to our town who would spend money and pay taxes in our community and provide jobs for our people. Jobs. I'm in Myrtle Beach quite a bit recently, and I heard just this week numerous advertisements for the people to approve a one-cent sales tax in Ori County, South Carolina, so that the taxpayers of Ori County wouldn't have to pay more to support their schools. Let the visitors do it. That's a good idea. Let the visitors do it. Tassle did the same thing for decades, with the exception of the back of the dragon. We now have a chance to do something different, something big. As Albert Einstein is credited with stating, insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. For more than 10 years, this council has worked hard, together, diligent, without division, to show to our community that this is a possibility. It is now the time that we move forward with this project as a united group, working together for the future of the town of Tassle.
Anything else?
Really, really fast, though. Like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
I would also like to congratulate and say all of the candidates that I was very, very happy that this was such a positive campaign. And it was very nice to be out of the polls yesterday and have the candidates all mingling around and talking to each other, being cordial, mingling all of our families. We had people with propane heaters and a grill making food. We had others come in with big trays of sandwiches, pizza brought in. It was, it was a very nice experience, and I would like to say that I would like to thank all the candidates for that.
Well, this is a good time, it was very interesting. Have you had anyone bring your grill out and fix the bacon in the morning? Okay, any other comments? All right, so I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Give a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjournments, say so by saying aye. All opposed, say so by saying nay.